Good evening and welcome to the East Hampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, March 17th, 2021. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast live via East Hampton Media on Charter Channel 193 and livestreamed on East Hampton Media's YouTube channel. We thank, as always, Jen Ramsey, the Executive Director of East Hampton Media, and her great team of Tim Riley and Ryan Arnold for helping us to bring these meetings to you. All councilors and participants in this meeting are gathered remotely during the COVID-19 pandemic under an executive order by Governor Baker on March 12th, 2020, allowing us to do so. I remind both members of the City Council and of the public to remain on mute until recognized by the chair. Also, for members of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of the meeting unless you are participating in public speak. Thank you. We will now call the meeting to order. Barbara?
Peggy Coniff?
Here.
Salem Derby?
Present.
Erica Flood?
Here.
Omar Gomez?
Here.
JP Kozinski?
Here.
Tom Peak?
Here.
Dan Rist?
Here.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Here.
Owen Zerrit?
Present.
We will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance
to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay. Now, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of March 3rd.
I move.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? Uh, Counsel Derby?
Thank you, Madam President. So, I did get an email today. It was brought to my attention that some of the comments that were reflected in public speak were incomplete, so I just wanted to mention that. And so, it seems like some of the people spoke during speak about their request for information on whether any East Hampton police officers had gone to the Capitol insurrection. And I think there was a comment on school lunches not receiving a postcard and about, yeah, so just in school lunches in general, and those comments didn't make it into the minutes. So, I just wanted to point that out and just to say that, you know, all these meetings are public record and you can find, you know, the full public speak at East Hampton Media. And so, you know, I mean, the minutes are not a full recording of everything that's said, and the video is, so I just wanted to point that out.
Okay. All right. We're still in the middle of approving the minutes. Did you, Counsel Derby, did you want to amend them or you're just pointing it out to us?
At this point, I'm just pointing it out, and if anybody wants to see the full comments, I would say to look at the video.
Okay. All right. Motion and a second. Barbara?
Peggy Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerrit?
Yes.
Motion passes. We're now at public speak, and we do have a public hearing at 6:15, so public speak will go until 6:15, and then it will conclude after that. So, anyone who would like to participate in public speak, go ahead and raise your hand. I see a couple. Kay Collins, go ahead.
Can I ask that Myra be put ahead of me? Is that okay?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Myra. You're on mute, Myra.
I should have learned that very well by now.
There you go.
Okay, so I just have something written, and here it goes. "So, I wanted to address the council as there have been questions and suggestions of manner and style of communication when addressing or approaching members of the council, a body which makes decisions at the macro level. These questions have been brought up specifically on East Hampton-based social media pages where several city councilors regularly engage with community members. Members of the community question why and how residents are in a position to make demands. I'd like to take some time to highlight information from a published work of another East Hampton resident, a Handbook of Communication for Development in Social Change by another OEDM. How can a single person or the collective action of individuals affect change? Protest. Protest is my communication, and protest is my participation. A study of protest in World Protest 2006 to 2013 shows a worldwide increase in protest actions. Protest is occurring in every region of the world, affecting every major regime category, from authoritarian countries to democracy. Protest has been used as a tool in agitating for social change in economic, health, human rights, politics, and gender-related issues. Protest is communication. Protest is a tool for communicating grievances and contestation. It's a means of communicating support or opposition to a certain ideology or practice. It's a communication strategy used in drawing attention to developmental and social issues that affect the well-being of residents." Nearly done. Protest is participation. It's a form of civil participation that reflects the actions of individuals in speaking out or against ideals and processes that have influence in shaping their safety, security, and well-being. It's a form of social involvement in decision-making about principles that shape lives as, shape their lives as residents. For democratic polity to exist and function, it's paramount for participatory society to exist. It is my opinion that we should strive for participatory society where residents can participate in a decision-making at the macro and micro levels of society and be able to communicate and exercise opinions and ideas. Protest actions utilize various tools and genres of communication, such as memorandum of demands, like transparency of provision of documents, written petitions, such as discontinuing, brandishing, or wearing the thin blue line while on duty, social media campaigns, opinion pieces, such as use of alternative press, and marches. And just wrapping it up, there are four critical characteristics of the current wave of protests globally: economic justice, elimination of inequality, ensuring affordable food and energy and housing. So, I'd like to state that while being warm and courteous are great attributes to possess, but they must not be used for the currency, they must not be the currency used for having concern addressed or the communication responded to by members of this body. Residents should civically participate and agitate for issues of importance and utilize communication in all its genres to protest for social issues that affect the well-being of residents." Thank you.
Thanks, Myra. Kay, do you want to go now, Kay? You're up.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Counsel Coniff. Kay Collins, East Hampton, Salem Derby's district. Um, I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of both myself and as a member of AICINE. And, you know, you all may wonder why we are asking once again for a direct answer stating there was no involvement in the insurrection of January 6th. It's not just for my personal sense of safety or the sense of safety of our BIPOC community members, but for anyone who wants the reassurance that police and city employees were not involved in an action wherein two individuals were just this week charged in the death of a police officer. Events leading to the death of another human should be a concern for all. My question for the council, the mayor, and the chief is this: what does accountability to this community look like to you? And to follow up with Myra's commentary on discourse, is AICINE being singled out as needlessly disruptive force, unworthy of response, when really what it inherently is, is a group of this body's constituents taxing residents of East Hampton, giving their time and their labor to bring to light inequity in our city that is publicly decried but privately dismissed or sometimes even seemingly derided? Many years ago, I attended a presentation about confronting my own implicit biases. The speaker, Miguel Valdez, said one thing that has guided my advocacy and my internal work since that moment: you must get comfortable with being uncomfortable. No shift in the status quo has ever been comfortable. When politeness fails, discomforting directness steps in. So, ask yourself why you react so strongly to being confronted with a lack of transparency and accountability, and ask yourself how you can do better. And as a side note to that, quickly, I sat in on the CRC, the Community Relations Committee, meeting last night where Derek from the Community Relations Arm of the Department of Justice sat in and spoke with the CRC about working with them, and I think that that's a productive step, and I would like to see more of that going forward. And my hope, too, is that we can have another public dialogue with Derek as a follow-up to the Spirit program that was put into place a couple of years ago that led to the CRC's formation. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kay. Carolyn Cushing?
Hello, Carolyn Cushing on Main Street. And first, I want to say thank you. The postcards that we've been talking about came out, and it would seem like it was a big effort, and the City Council played a part in having it go out, so thank you for that. And actually, I was the one who emailed Salem about what seemed to be missing in the minutes, the notes, and so thank you, Salem, for raising that. And I just, it was odd to see what was left out was, you know, Liz talking about not hearing about the insurrection. I was talking specifically about the postcards and the lunches, and Megan Fowler was talking also about not having information, and that these were all AICINE points, and they didn't go into the minutes. And I don't think it was personal or intentional. It just then is another thing that we're seeing, this pattern of not being listened to or not being responded to. And, you know, our desire for information, responses, or engagement made over and over again since December, going unanswered by the mayor, the police chief, or police department is also part of that pattern. And just to say, like, our points in making these requests and being here at public speak and raising these questions and seeking information is to not just be making noise, but to engage in projects and sound alerts to be part of making East Hampton a welcoming, inclusive, sustainable place to live, even in these times of pandemic and racial justice reckoning. And what we're trying to do is, we're trying to help eradicate bias, racism, institutional oppression from our city institutions, which along with just making the city a better place, also reduces liability and the potential of lawsuits, like the one just recently settled with students involved in the 2017 incidents at the high school. And what we are trying, wanting to do is to help children and families access food, and these would seem to be desires we all share, the mayor, the police chief, the city council, school department, but to work on them together, we are perceiving a breakdown in communication. And so, that's my main point. And then, one other thank you, I read the mayor's address, and saw that all city departments and heads will be going through anti-racism training. That's a good step for the city to be taking in a long-term effort to eradicate institutional racism, and so, thank you all.
Thank you, Carolyn. LJ?
Sorry, I've got new technology. My name's Louise Jacob. I'm a resident of Precinct 3. And I'm here also to talk about transparency and accountability, which are portion of communications. And start by quoting the mayor's State of the City. She said, "From my very first State of the City address, you have heard my commitment to transparency and accessibility that is about tearing through the red tape. We're so used to in government that often builds barriers and perpetuates biases. But making government more accessible is just one element of countering historic discrimination and bias against Black, Indigenous, and people of color." And, sorry, somebody's been pointed out, I'm on a new device. I think I'm getting rid of the bars. Um, yeah, we're talking about bias against Black, against BIPOC peoples, and I'm trying to question how this council has looked towards that vision. We've emailed this council with questions and concerns on numerous occasions, and we've met with silence. We've asked questions during public speak in an attempt to get the answers, and these two have gone unanswered, and I'm aware that I'm caught up. Carolyn says some of the same things just now. I do think that there has to be some sort of structures put in place for this communication to happen, and is asking the city council what they propose. Also, saying that we know that there's steps to make the website more accessible, but that is not going to be enough if we don't get any responses, if normal citizens don't get any responses from the council. Do want to recognize the effort from the city to let residents know about the school free meal, particularly important to me. It was a great first step, and the postcards I just received, and I do have two concerns. It took a community group going door-to-door to find out what was being experienced, and then publicly calling to get the city to act. And will this be, most importantly, will this be the only step taken to ensure that residents can access and are aware of available resources? Could there be plans for some sort of systematic polling of residents to find out how they are doing pertaining not only to food, but also housing, internets, and the other impacts of COVID? Because, and I will say, we just did three brief test door-to-door canvases with help from two councilors. We didn't, there's a whole city out there, and we found that there's city resources available to feed children, yet there were children not able to access it and going hungry. Um, yes, and when we see with the single program, people are falling through the cracks. That's what I want to emphasize mostly.
Louise, you have about 15 more seconds.
Okay, and ask you as our representatives to do something for accountability, to make sure that the city resources are reaching everybody, and that everybody is aware of them, and that everybody has access to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise. Jean, I see you up there. We have to start a public hearing right now, but we will get to you when the public hearing is over, if that's okay. Thank you. All right. I'll take a motion to open the public hearings.
Madam President, I move we open the public hearings.
Okay.
Motion is second to open public hearings. Barbara?
Peggy Coniff?
Aye.
Yeah, okay. I'll start with you again. Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerrit?
Yes.
Okay, the public hearings are now open. Counsel Rist, do you want to kick us off?
Yes, we have two supplemental appropriations this evening to approve. The first is a $61,450 appropriation, which is being funded by cannabis stabilization. It is for the fire department, and Chief Morris is here if you have questions, but it primarily funds, for two reasons, areas of his budget that may not have been funded to the same extent that they have been in the past, because, as you know, our fiscal '21 budget was not as funded as we would have liked due to the pandemic. Also, and a great deal of this is because of the increased service demand on EMS. And though, if you have questions about any of these, the Finance Committee did approve this three to zero, and we talked a little bit about some of the asked items, but the chief adequately defended them, of course. So, Chief Morris, do you have anything you want to say to this, or, and if any of the councilors have questions, he's here.
Yes, and thank you, Counsel Rist, and good evening, everyone. Like Counselor stated, when you looked at the fire department budget that was funded for this fiscal year, a couple of things really kind of impacted it going into the last part of this fiscal year. The first one is the COVID-19, where across the city, all different departments are feeling that financial impact, and certainly in EMS, we're feeling that. The example I always use is with EMS supplies. We certainly had to look at fulfilling that need for proper PPE for our personnel responded to these COVID emergencies, and the challenge that we ran into, particularly the last three to six months, is the cost of supplies and how much they have escalated in cost. Just to give you one example that I use frequently talking about this specific issue, a case of gloves. A year ago, a case of gloves was $120, and that would give you 10 boxes of gloves. If you try to purchase those gloves now for that same case, it's around $275 for that same case of gloves. So, that's the financial impact that we're facing trying to deliver these same services. And then, the other one is the West Hampton contract. That is actually going very well for the city. We're tracking each call out there. We're working with our medical billing company to track the finances, but as part of that contract, we have to call back to make sure we maintain adequate coverage for the city of East Hampton to personnel each time that ambulance goes to West Hampton. So, that has impacted the overtime budget for EMS by around $13,000 to $15,000 for the entire fiscal year. And then, the last one that has really kind of driven this request is the service contract maintenance agreements. To give you an example and understand what that means, a year ago, the city of East Hampton had one automated CPR machine. That CPR machine was actually kept in the middle of the apparatus floor, so personnel had to actually guess in terms of when they were leaving for a call, if they were going to need that piece of equipment. Through the use of different CARES funds and the support of the mayor and her financial team, we were able to procure a automated CPR machine for each of the three ambulances, as well as automated ambulance cot lift machines for each ambulance. The big benefit for the city on those stretcher lift systems is the reduced liability for injuries with our personnel, and certainly that would have a much more significant financial impact if we have someone get hurt. But now that we have this equipment, we need to make sure we maintain it and take care of it. So, that going into this last fiscal year, now that we have some more equipment, that's what drives the request up a little bit more to help maintain that. So, those are kind of three big factors going into the last quarter of this fiscal year that this request is based on, and I'm certainly happy to answer any of the questions people may have.
Chief, question, just on the magnitude of this, so it's about $61,500 to bring you whole for the fiscal year. How will that be reflected as we go forward into the next budget cycle? Will your budget come up to meet this need, or will you not need it because of some changes or because you now have certain pieces of equipment you didn't have before and/or staff that you didn't have before?
Yeah, no, that's a great question, Counselor, and right now, we're in the process of working with the mayor and her financial team to address next year's needs, but I think to answer your question, going forward, these are certainly financial needs that we're gonna have to maintain going forward to properly take care of this equipment.
Anyone? Counsel Peak and then Counsel Zerrit?
Thank you, Madam President. Thanks, Chief, for being here. I was just curious, because you had brought it up, is your assessment, I remember we spoke about this early in the year or late last year, and is your assessment still that the West Hampton contract is something that on net is going to be like a financial positive, like a benefit for the city?
Yes, absolutely. I'm very comfortable and confident speaking before any group about that. When you look at that overarching contract and the impact for the city, both financially and operationally, it's a good partnership. On July 1st each year, again, as a reminder, more so for the public, the town of West Hampton pays the city of East Hampton $25,000, and I term that kind of a retainer fee. And you can kind of look at that in a number of different ways, but that $25,000 basically will cover the overtime cost if every time the ambulance goes out there and we call back two people, that would cover that cost. Then, when you look at the actual payer mix in the town of West Hampton and the transports, anywhere from 80 to 100 a year, we should be netting an overall gain to the city of East Hampton around $80,000 plus each year going forward. My team has started tracking those numbers as of July 1st this past year, so going forward, our goal is to work with all the city council and better track those numbers and the finances associated with that.
Great, thanks.
Counsel Zerrit?
Chief, thanks for everything your department does, especially in the midst of the pandemic. I know it's challenging. Just, if you said this and I missed it, some of the PPE costs, do you find that some of those supplies are artificially raised in the midst of the pandemic, and they might actually go down in the future?
As much as I'd like to hope they would go down, I haven't seen that in my 25-year career, and I wouldn't expect that. I think the costs are going to stay at or unfortunately increase as time goes on. I think that's the unfortunate reality.
Any other councilors have any questions? Counsel Kozinski?
Just a quick question, and again, thank you for bringing this to our attention, Chief Norris. With regard to the contract with West Hampton, is there a, is it an annual contract with perhaps negotiation for fees since we're experiencing increased costs such as the supplies, such as you mentioned, the automatic CPR machines, the auto lift machines, or are we fixed for at $25,000?
So, when that contract was signed, it was a three-year contract, three fiscal years, so obviously, we're in that first year, so two more years, we can open up that contract and work with the mayor and the community and see where we're at. Certainly, at that time, we'll have more concrete numbers and be able to break that apart more, but to answer your question directly, it's a three-year contract, but we have the ability to alter that as do appropriate.
Thank you.
Any other questions from any other councilors? Okay. Thank you, Chief. Dan, Counsel Rist?
Questions from the public, Madam President? If there are any?
Are there any questions from the public?
I think Jean's hand up is for public speak.
Yeah, I believe so as well.
I don't see any.
I'm not seeing any.
Therefore, I'll make a motion. I move that the full council approve a supplemental appropriation. The amount requested is $61,450 to be transferred from the cannabis stabilization account, to be transferred to. Uniform allowances, $3,750. Fire medical expenses, $2,150. Fire education and training, $2,100. Fire building and equipment, R&amp;M, $4,200. Fire equipment, $5,800. Fire repairs to vehicles, $850. SCBA maintenance and repair, $250. Uniforms and equipment, $2,250. ALS EMS overtime, $3,000. Ambulance callback overtime, $12,000. Professional and tech services, $5,000. EMS supplies, $9,500. And maintenance agreements, $10,600. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: to fund the above requested line items based on the increased service demand for EMS, provide annual service and maintenance on EMS and fire equipment, and provide initial medical exams and personal protective equipment for new personnel.
Point of procedure, Madam President?
We need to get a second first.
Second?
Okay, go ahead, Counsel Kozinski.
Just point of procedure, I think since one resident has their hand up, even though I think we all know that the hand was up for public speak, I think as a matter of process, we ought to call that person and ask them to respond, just to be fair to everybody in the room.
Gene, would you like to make a comment? I didn't think so. Okay. All right.
I'm going to lower your hand, Gene, so that we don't get confused in the future. You're certainly welcome to put it up for public speak as it comes forward.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for supplemental appropriation of $61,450 for various, to be transferred to various fire department accounts. Any further discussion? Barbara.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Erica Flood.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Motion passes. Counselor Rist.
The next supplemental appropriation request is from the Community Preservation Committee. It's for $15,000 to fund a part of the record survey that we all heard about when we approved the $50,000 last time. This is the record survey that Barbara's requested to archive, organize our records. This particular amount is targeted for the records in Old Town Hall. We all saw the pictures of all those records and how they were being kept. And this is just part of the funding for the entire project since these records are definitely historic, the CPA is appropriately used, and the CPA committee approved it unanimously, and the finance committee approved it three to zero. This is just another part of the entire project. And I think you all heard from Barbara the last time. I don't know if Barbara, if you want to say anything else, but this is just a continuation of the same program.
Sure, I can kind of give you a little update on the timeframe of this. Actually, work is supposed to start on Monday, April 5th. So it's coming up soon. So they're going to be starting and it's probably going to take, what did they say, 40 days or so? So we're going to be getting going really soon on this.
Do any counselors have any specific questions for Barbara? Does anyone from the public have any questions for Barbara regarding this appropriation? I am not seeing any. Counselor Rist.
Just one comment. Barbara, I'm going to remind you that once this is all done, we need to appropriately put procedures in place. And I know you'll work with the mayor to make sure that people don't, once again, just throw things in the room.
Yep.
That they have to put it in appropriately so that we don't have to do this again, of course. I will make a motion for the full council to approve a supplemental appropriation request from the Community Preservation Committee. The amount requested is $15,000 to be appropriated from the CPA Reserve for Historic Preservation Account, $15,000, to be appropriated to the City Archival Record Survey Phase Two, $15,000 for the purpose of hiring a contractor to implement recommendations based on the initial Phase One survey, inventory index, and re-box archival items, separate out records that can be destroyed, and create a database of the archival records to be saved.
Second.
Motion in a second for a supplemental appropriation request in the amount of $15,000 for archival record survey. Any further discussion? Barbara.
Erica Flood.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, next up on, thank you, Counselor Rist, next up on the public hearing is a city ordinance amendment. Counselor Derby.
Thank you, Madam President. So what we have in front of us tonight is a continuation of what we started with the resolution that we passed at our last meeting. This is the codification of the holidays into our ordinances. This previously did not exist. And so now what we're doing is we're codifying the holidays that are celebrated in, by the city of East Hampton and in our ordinance. And what we have here is we have a listing of those holidays. And I know that this was also sent to our city attorney. And the city attorney had requested that we add in basically a sentence. And I don't know, Counselor Coniff, if you want me to, you know, read that first or do you want me to, you know, read this as a motion and then amend it? I'm happy to do it either way, whichever you think is.
Well, since we haven't made a motion, you can, you can make a motion including the change if you'd like to.
That sounds, that sounds good. Yeah, so if anybody has any questions.
Counselor Zarek, we have, okay, Counselors.
Just, just quickly, I don't know how this happened. I apologize. But we, the clerk was sharp eyed and pointed out that somehow we forgot the day before Thanksgiving and Thanksgiving. So there's, I guess I'll just, after you make the main motion, I'll just motion to amend to include those.
Okay. Any other discussion regarding these, this change to the ordinances? Any questions? Anyone from the public have any questions related to the change to this ordinance? Okay, I'm not seeing any.
Okay. So I would like to move to create section two, recognition of Indigenous Peoples' Day in the amendment of 3461B holidays. On the second Monday of October, the city shall recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day and shall encourage the celebration of this day in a manner that promotes respect, understanding, and friendship, combats prejudice, bias, works to eliminate discrimination stemming from colonization and knowledge of our history. The remaining of Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day shall in no way impair or otherwise change any obligation contractual or otherwise to the city in which the term Columbus Day is currently used. And I also, go ahead, Counselors.
Point of order. Sorry. Counselor Derby, that language is, that's, that's not the, that's some exemplary language that I had included for the attorney. That's, that's not the language that we're using.
Okay, so.
Motion, you want to remove your motion?
Yeah, I'm happy to, I'm happy to, well, I don't even think I had a second, so I'm happy to remove it. I just wanted to, so I know that what we need to do, I wasn't sure what was first or what was second. So I'll make a motion to add section 2.8 holidays. The city shall observe the following holidays for the purpose of building closures, enforcement, and personnel: New Year's Eve, half-day; New Year's Day; Martin Luther King Day; third Monday in January; President's Day; third Monday in February; Patriots' Day; third Monday in April; Memorial Day; last Monday in May; Independence Day; Labor Day; first Monday in September; Indigenous Peoples' Day; second Monday in October, per March 3rd, 2021 Council, City Council Resolution; Veterans' Day; November 11th; Christmas Eve, half-day; Christmas Day.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? I think Counselor Zarek, you wanted to amend it?
Yes, and I would, I would just say quickly also that, that language, that was from Ithaca and I kind of like it, but I think the purpose was just to set the holidays. And we commemorated the intention of language that Counselor Derby was speaking with the resolution, but that's just an aside.
Before you make your amendment, I think we also need to include that language from the lawyer. So if you're amending it, can you add that, Counselor Zarek?
I'd be more than happy to.
Thank you.
So I'd like to make, I've got, I've got to offer two amendments then. The first would be to amend the language to insert after Veterans' Day, November 11th, day before Thanksgiving, half-day, and Thanksgiving Day to be inserted after Veterans' Day, November 11th, and before Christmas Eve. That's in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion second for the amendment to insert after Veterans' Day, November 11th, the phrasing the day before Thanksgiving as a half-day and Thanksgiving Day into the ordinance. Any discussion on that? We can vote on that amendment. Go ahead, Barbara.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Erica Flood.
Aye. Okay, the amendment passes. Counselor Zarek, did you have another?
I do, and I'm just going to, off the cuff here, I really like that language that Ithaca used. And so I'm going to make an amendment to basically include that language and include the, the appended language that the attorney included. And I'll allow my, my colleagues to discuss whether they would like that. So in the form of a motion, I'd like to add a second amendment to insert at the end of the form discussed language for section 2/8 holidays to include the following language: On the second Monday in October, the city shall recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day and shall encourage the celebration of this day in a manner that promotes respect, understanding, and friendship, combats prejudice and bias, works to eliminate discrimination stemming from colonization, acknowledges our history. The renaming of Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day shall in no way impair or otherwise change any obligation contractual or otherwise of the city in which the term Columbus Day is currently used.
Second.
So further discussion, and I will start. I find it a little odd that we're going to call out a specific holiday within an ordinance. Like, I'm fine with the, the legal phrase because I think that does change things and it could change union contracts and all sorts of things like that. But the prior sentence seems out of place to the rest of the holidays within the ordinance. And if we're going to include that, then we should include positive phrasing around all the holidays and what they mean. And we either have, all of them have some sort of narrative or none of them have some sort of narrative. This is really just defining the holidays. Counselor Rothschild.
I agree with you, Counselor Coniff. While I get your intention, we could also put some educational language around Martin Luther King Day or Labor Day, the importance of labor. So I don't think we need that language there. I think what we need is real action and education in our community, not just, you know, I think that would be more impactful.
Counselor Rist and then Counselor Gomez.
I agree with Counselor Coniff. I think the ordinance should be specific and only the language regarding, the legal language regarding the holiday not affecting contracts, et cetera, should be in there. And the other thing I'll point out is we had a huge resolution on this very subject. So it was stated already by this council and it's on the record. So I think, oh, and we don't need that other language in the specific ordinance. And an ordinance is a legal thing. So, and that's more of a statement of our preferences, et cetera. So I think it should be removed and I'd ask you to re-read your amendment without that language.
Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Madam President. I agree with Counselor Rist. He took my word. I'm going to mention the resolution. I think the resolution is clear and is, it go to the point. And I think we covered that with the resolution. So, thank you.
So we can do one of two things. We can vote on your amendment and go forward with it and however it goes is how it goes. We would then, depending, if it does not pass, then we have to do another amendment for just the legal language. So it's up, you know, if you want to withdraw your second and motion and just go with the legal, or if you want to go through with the vote for this particular one.
I think it would probably make sense for me to just withdraw my second.
Okay. Counselor Zarek, do you want to withdraw your motion for amendment?
Sure, I'll withdraw my motion. And I will then make a new motion to amend the language to add to the end of section, the proposed section 2/8 holidays, the renaming of Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day shall in no way impair or otherwise change any obligation contractual or otherwise of the city to which the term Columbus Day is currently used.
I'll second that.
Motion second for the amendment to add the legal language around not impacting other areas in the city that have that name or words that affect. Any further conversation? Counselor Zarek.
Again, I just want to clarify that that language was used legally in other municipalities and that's how they made sure to, I think as Counselor Derby said, codify this holiday. So, but I'm, I, I agree that we did commemorate this with the resolution and this, putting this name in our list of holidays should be good enough. And then we need to move forward with action as has been mentioned. So this is just one step of the journey.
Okay. Any other conversation? Okay, so on this amendment, Barbara, I'll take a vote.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Counselor Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Yep.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Erica Flood.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. And now we will vote on the entire ordinance, including Indigenous Peoples' Day, including the amendment for Thanksgiving Day and the day before, and including the legal language around the impact of changing the name to other contracts within the city. That has been motioned and seconded. So any further conversation? Any conversation from the public? Okay, Barbara.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Erica Flood.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
I apologize for the confusion. I was flipping between email screens and I read the wrong one, so.
No worries.
But I can motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion second to close public hearing. Any further discussion? Barbara.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Yes.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Erica Flood.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Dan Peak.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. The public hearings are now closed. We will resume public speak now. Gene, you're up. If you're still there.
I am, but now I've almost forgot what I was going to say. One thing, I was listening to what Kay and Carolyn and everybody was saying about how they have not had responses from the city council, from the mayor, from Alberti. So one thing I want to say as a white-skinned privileged woman, that what I'm doing, I would like to take on to confront other white-skinned privileged people and to say that not responding to people of color is yet another way of long line of how racism plays out and how we don't confront each other. So I just want you all to know that that is very apparent and it feels yucky to me. The one thing, another thing I wanted to say is I read what, what Nicole wrote too about doing these anti-racist trainings. But what I want to say to that is, hey, then you can check off a box. Oh, I went to an anti-racist training. I'm sure we've all been to plenty of them. But what I have to say is that white racism has, you need a lifelong commitment to this and we all need to be looking at it and it needs to be seriously looked at. There's so much good stuff out there right now to read on your own and to educate yourself about how this has been going on in this country for 400 years. So I, that's what I just wanted to add. But I also just want you to really take a look, all of you, about how that feels to people of color when you don't respond to them and you sort of, whatever case said, decried, or however you're looking at it at this point. The other thing, I got an email this morning that says that the Anti-Defamation League has just put out a report about white supremacist, you know, rhetoric in the country. And one of the states that is the most prevalent in is Massachusetts. And that in Massachusetts, we have this, and I think it's called the Nationalist Socialist Club, that was founded in the state of Massachusetts. So, you know, for all of us, you know, white folks here in the Northeast and thinking, oh, everything's okay, we are not okay. It is everywhere. And we need to start with it in our city council to stand up and be leaders about this and speak out against racism. So that's what I have to say. Thank you all very much for all the work you do.
Thank you, Gene. Okay, is there anyone else for public speak? Okay. Okay, we'll now move on to the agenda. Communication from elected officials, boards, and committees. I've asked Janet Tetra to be here, as well as Jamie Webb. Well, I didn't ask, I was asked, and I agreed to it, to talk a little bit about the CPA relief program. But I also know, Counselor Rist, did you want to say something before we start this presentation?
I'd like to go after I hear Jana and Jamie, please.
Okay. And then after Jamie and Jana are done, I will allow counselors to provide any communication that you may have apart and separate from this particular presentation. So I don't know who wants to go first, Jamie or Jana, but the floor is now yours.
Thank you, President Coniff. Just wanted to introduce myself. I think everyone on the council knows me, but not necessarily members of the public. My name is Jamie Webb. I'm the Assistant Planner for the city, and I'm providing oversight of the implementation of the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. I'm joined tonight by Janet Tetra, who is a resident of East Hampton and is the Program Administrator for the program. She works for Community Action Pioneer Valley. And before, sort of turn it over to her, I just wanted to provide a little background and remind the committee of how we got here. So about a year ago, the pandemic started, and there were a lot of discussions between the city council, the mayor, the planning department, and the CPA committee about the impacts, projected impacts of the pandemic. We're looking at the economic situation. A lot of people were losing jobs or being laid off, and there was concern for people losing their homes. And we had, there was a lot of conversations about what we can do to help protect people, keep them in their homes during the pandemic. And CPA funds were identified as a way to prevent evictions. Around the same time, at the state level, there were many conversations about the same problems, and the state provided guidance to municipalities as to how to implement and run emergency rental assistance programs with using CPA funding. So after that process, we went to some webinars, we put out a request for proposals in June, following the state guidance, and we received zero responses. That request for proposals was to hire a Program Administrator to implement this program. We waited a few more months, reissued the RFP for the Program Administrator in October last year, and received two responses. Community Action Pioneer Valley was chosen by the Selection Committee to manage the program. And Community Action needed some more time to hire more staff, and we needed some time to finish the contracting and to actually set up the, some of the details of the program, how it'd be implemented. And at the end of January, Community Action started to accept applications for this rental assistance program. And so now I'm gonna turn it over to Jana, who can talk a little bit more about the program. Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie. Good evening, everyone. So I, I'm just gonna give a brief update on where we are in terms of applications. The, this program is administered by Community Action's Community Resources and Advocacy Program, which is a longtime program at Community Action. The program, staffs an information and referral line, so callers can call from all over the region about all kinds of things. A lot of things they call about are things that Community Action offers, but they're also calling about, you know, looking for resources. The program also regularly provides help with utility shut-off prevention, heating, financial assistance to prevent evictions, SNAP applications, and healthcare applications. So the staff are trained to do mass health and health connector applications. So we've been doing this kind of work for a long time. We have multiple funding sources that we use to help prevent evictions and to do utility prevention and heating. And so we are really excited to be working with the City of East Hampton on this project. So I just wanted to give you a few statistics about where we are in terms of the application pool and marketing, and then I'm happy to answer questions that you all may have. So since February 1st, which is about when we launched the program, we've received 92 calls from East Hampton residents to the program. Not all of those callers are about the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. They could be calling about all kinds of things. But I looked back at the same period of time in 2020, and we only received 25 calls from East Hampton residents a year ago during the same period. So clearly, it's generating a lot of calls, even if they're calling for other things. Thirty-seven percent of those calls were about housing. So folks who were either behind in their rent, or concerned about their rent, or had already received a notice to quit. And of the 92, 29 households received appointments. It's sort of hard for me to tell exactly what all of those appointments were for without spending a lot of time. So they could have been for things that were not just for this program, but for other issues that they might have needed help with. So our current application pool is 22 households. At this point, three applications have been approved for about, totaling about $5,803. One application's been denied. One application has been withdrawn because the person was able to resolve the issue on their own. And I have 17 applications that are currently in some state of process, meaning they've already had an appointment, and they are either gathering information, or we're waiting on the landlord, or it's waiting to be reviewed by the supervisor. All of the appointments are taking place via phone at this point, and we have, Community Action uses a Citrix Share File system that can securely upload documents. So that's how most applicants are able to send us their information. We do obviously accept things by mail if people can't use that system, but that has been mostly what people have been doing. Marketing efforts to date, there's been some Facebook posts that Community Action did, and a lot of people shared, which was great. There's also been some activity on the Facebook, you know, the East Hampton Facebook pages. There were some Instagram posts. We did, there was a press release that was sent by the mayor's office, and then there's been some flyers sent out to the largest landlords in town, some information out to the community center, the council on aging, the school department. And, you know, those are places that we can continue to push, but those were where we initially sent out information. I think that's my, that's all I have. I'm happy to answer questions.
What would cause an application to be denied?
That's a great question. So, and we are looking, obviously, we have a criteria that the city set up of who's eligible, right? So you have to be a renter, you have to be behind in your rent at least one month, you need to be income-eligible, the income limit is set at 100% of the area median income. We are looking at, we're asking people to submit their bank statements and their pay stubs. You have to have a COVID-related reason, so there has to be a reason that's related to COVID, why you're behind in your rent. So those are the kinds of things we're looking for. So the people are screened before they're made an appointment. So if someone's clearly over income or doesn't have a COVID reason, they may get an appointment for another program, but not for the East Hampton program. But, so we are looking to make sure, when we look at bank statements, that people don't, or they don't have the resources already to resolve the issue on their own. So if someone has, you know, assets or resources in their bank account that reasonably could have resolved the issue on their own, then that could be a reason why people are denied.
Okay, thanks, Jana. I saw Counselor Rist, and then Counselor Flood. Counselor Rist?
Jana, can you explain to the public why the money goes to the landlord? And second question, has any landlord refused to participate in this program?
So no landlord that I'm aware of, up until now, has refused to participate. And the money goes to the landlord. It's a very, that's a very common procedure in programs like this, where the tenant is receiving some type of benefit. It goes to the landlord because it, you know, for CPA purpose and the city's purpose, you know, that's the intention, is to pay back rent. So it's important that it would go, make sure it's going to that purpose. The landlord signs an agreement between, we don't sign it. The landlord signs an agreement that says that they're accepting the payment, that it's for these months of rent, that they agree not to evict the tenant for at least 30 days. They know what the source of the funds are. And it, you know, other programs, Fuel Assistance, for example, that, you know, pays the heating vendor, they don't pay the tenant, the homeowner or the tenant. Section 8 pays the landlord, not the tenant. So it's a very common practice, and one that we do with, with all of the programs that we administer.
Thank you.
I'd like to just add as well that the guidance the state released regarding the programs and how cities or in towns should implement them, recommended that the payments go directly to the landlords, and that the 1099s would be issued to the landlords at the end of the program. And that helps also to, you know, that the debt is owed to the landlord, and it doesn't count as extra income that the tenant is then paying, or would have to then pay taxes on later.
That makes sense. Thanks, Jamie. Erica, and then Counselor Peak?
Yep, just a quick question, going back to that screening process. I do know folks who are living at or below the poverty level who are unbanked. How is a situation like that held? And is that something that would, you know, would they pass the screening test if they're, if they don't have a bank account?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we have a lot of folks that don't have bank accounts. So we have them sign a self-certification that just says that they don't have a bank account, and then we just use that as our backup, that we've at least done the due diligence to ask if they've had a bank, have a bank account. But it's, it's, it's pretty common in the, the population of folks that Community Action serves, that, that not everyone has a bank account.
Counselor Peak?
So I know that you gave a, sort of a list of, of applications, but how, out of the 300,000 that we appropriated, how much of that has actually been dispersed?
I can answer that. So of the $300,000, a small amount of it, less than $5,000, was used for advertising and the, getting the RFP out. The remainder, the contract that was entered into with Community Action Pioneer Valley was for a pilot program for $124,000, $24,000 for administration of the program, and $100,000 for grants to clients. To date, the city has not been billed yet for any of Community Action Pioneer Valley's work to administer the program, nor have we been billed yet for any of the client assistance payments. As Jana had said earlier, we have committed $5,803 towards those rental assistance payments.
So, so only $5,000 has gone out toward, to renters out of, does that seem really low?
Well, remember that there's only three approved applications. And so that $5,803 is what those three households needed. And so the process, you know, generally takes about four to five weeks for an application to get approved, and all the paperwork done, and the voucher, you know, the checkout to the landlord. So, you know, we're about six weeks into the program. Things take longer during COVID. It takes longer for people to get their documents in. It takes longer to contact the landlord. So we had, Community Action in our response had, had requested less than the available amount, because we were not sure that we could spend $300,000 in such a short period of time. Our other experiences in other communities is that it's, the, the need is hard to measure, and it's, it's, you know, and we're working in Amherst, and we have not spent nearly as much money as we had available to us, just because that's, you know, the application pool has been different than what people expected. So it's just, it's really hard to tell what the need is.
I can also say that our program, when we started this program, there was not a lot of money available from the state for other rental assistance programs. But since over the last year, there've been a number of federal, federal funds and state funds aimed at the Raft program, which is managed by Wayfinders in Springfield. And a lot of people, when you call the state's 211 line, 211, 311?
211.
311, thank you.
211, you're right.
Oh, it's 211, sorry. You'll get referred to Wayfinders as opposed to Community Action Pioneer Valley. So I think the, and we don't have access to those numbers for how many East Hampton residents have taken advantage of the Raft program. The main difference is that the Raft program caps at 80% AMI, whereas our program goes up to 100% AMI. So someone who doesn't qualify for Raft may still qualify for the East Hampton Rental Assistance Program.
Jana, for the 22 households that are, well, the 17 that are pending, do their landlords know that they're in, in a program to get the money to the landlord? Does a landlord have an idea that things will, in a positive sense, potentially be working for these tenants?
It's hard to say. We usually don't contact the landlord until the application is approved. So, well, no, I take that back. We would contact the landlord to get a copy of the ledger, if the, if the tenant didn't already have one, or wasn't able to provide us with one. So some landlords would know if their tenant was, you know, in the process of, of getting, you know, or working with Community Action. And certainly, if they're in court, if they've gone to housing court, then we always suggest that the tenant mention to the landlord and at court that they're working with Community Action, so that the, you know, everybody knows that the tenant is making good faith, you know, efforts to assist them.
Okay. One second. Kay Collins, I see that you have your hand up, and unfortunately, there is no public input during this portion of the agenda, so I apologize.
Has a list of my questions, actually, by email.
Okay. Counselor Rostrop?
I asked this question before, but not to you, so I'm curious. How do you gauge if someone's behind in the rent? Because these kinds of things always concern me, when people are doing everything they can, borrowing money, but they, taking money from places that, like, their food budget or whatever, to pay their rent. Just programs that say you have to fall behind to get help, even if you need help. Is there any other way? Or if they borrowed money from a family member, is that a way to show? Is there another? That's, that's what my question is.
It's not. So they need to, they need to, we basically are looking at the ledger or getting documentation from the landlord that they have not paid at least one month of rent. And the reason that we're doing that is to demonstrate need. And so, because we are, we've been doing this for a couple other communities, and we're administering the program in Amherst, and it's been incredibly challenging and time-consuming for us to demonstrate need when the person's not behind in their rent. You know, it's, it's like a math equation that takes my staff a really long time, and then, to be honest with you, a lot of people get denied because it looks like they should be able to pay their rent. And so we, for the East Hampton program, we, what we proposed is that the household be behind at least one month, because then they've already demonstrated a need for assistance. And we don't have to, you know, spend a lot of time trying to figure out if they really are needed or not. It was just.
I, can I follow up to that? I just, I think that's problematic, just because as a person who always does everything to, like, because I'm afraid of, like, breaking the rules or getting kicked out, and then not, and then getting punished because you're actually, like, what if a person has, like, high credit card bills, because they're putting all their groceries and everything on credit cards, because they're putting all their cash towards their rent? It just seems like there should be another way to show need, and people who are actually meeting their landlord's obligations should not be punished. I find that really problematic. So I wish we could revise that in some way. Okay.
So one of the sort of principles that we're trying to go for when we establish this program is that it is an emergency rental assistance program. It's not a run-of-the-mill rental assistance program. There are, you know, CPA funds could fund a permanent rental assistance program that would try to deal with. that would try to deal with some of these points that you brought up, Counselor. But I think for this program in particular, we're just trying to target, to, to try to target folks who, because of COVID, in an emergency situation are behind in their rent. And this was the, again, this was the program that was accepted by, it was accepted by the city as part of that RFP. We are, part of the, part of the reason again why we were doing this as a pilot, the first part of the, was to figure out if it's working for the city or not and to be able to come back and reevaluate and change the program for, for the next part.
I think, I'll let myself talk now. I think, you know, I, I, I completely agree with Counselor Rothschild. As you were talking, I was like, ooh, that seems a little dicey. But I think what I am more worried about honestly is the four to five weeks from application to result. Is there, is it a staffing situation that creates four to five weeks? Because if we're talking about an emergency, four to five weeks seems like not really reacting to the emergency. So is there a way, is it the process? Is it state responding to you? Like, what is creating a four to five week wait from application to decision? I mean, I think it's, I think it's COVID. I think it's the fact that we are not in, you know, we're not meeting with clients in person like we used to. You know, the applicant, the appointments are happening on the phone. Then folks are uploading documents. Sometimes they don't upload all the documents. Sometimes we have to go back to them. Sometimes it takes a couple of days. Sometimes the landlord doesn't call us back for a week. You know, it's, you know, I will say, you know, our, the RAFT program is processing things at eight weeks. So I feel pretty good about four to six weeks. But I also, I think I also just want to let, you know, sort of give a little bit of background on sort of what's happening in terms of housing court and, you know, in terms of evictions, is that things are moving very slowly. So certainly if somebody was about to get evicted, you know, in three days, and this actually happened a couple of weeks ago, we got a call from Community Legal Aid. We have an excellent relationship with the Community Legal Aid staff. They said, I have someone with the sheriff coming. They live in East Hampton. And we, we had an appointment with them this after, that afternoon. So if the person is really urgent, we will start the process as soon as we can so that at least legal aid and other advocates can say, well, the person, you know, they've applied, you know, this is, they have this in the works, this is happening. But for a lot of folks who are just getting a notice to quit, even though I, I totally understand that it feel, for them, it is really urgent and is very traumatic to get a notice to quit or to get an eviction notice if you've never had that happen to you before. But it's a very long process. And so it can take, you know, eight weeks to get it scheduled. And then you go to housing court and now they've changed the process at housing court where the first meeting is only a discuss, like a discussion. There's not any type of, they're just talking about what's going on and what other resources are available. And then it goes, they go back again. So it's, it takes a really long time. And so I, I appreciate, I mean, I, I agree that four to five weeks is a long time, but everything's taking a really long time. And so it's, you know, we are doing our best to meet folks if they are really in a crisis. Yeah. Counselor Peak.
Yeah, I, I heard, I got a question from a constituent the other day that I, I just wanted to, to ask about, which is, as you know, East Hampton can be an expensive place to live, whether you're a homeowner or a renter. And a lot of the people that I know who fall sort of within these income guidelines households where they have one or several roommates. And there was a concern that, so like you might have a lot of these people who are individually trying to make the rent for like their bedroom. But there might be within the household four people who each are making, I don't know, thirty thousand dollars a year. That's certainly different than like a person living in an apartment that's making a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, you know? And so the thought, there was this sense that, there was a concern that people in that position who sublet a room in an apartment might not be applicable for this sort of thing. And if that's the case, is that something that we could actually address? Like, could we change our rules in a way that would allow for that sort of thing? Because otherwise it seems like you're leaving out a huge number of the people that actually might need this. I mean, everyone I know who's working in like the service industry, who's been affected by the COVID closures has roommates. None of them could afford an apartment in East Hampton by their own.
Right. So roommates are definitely eligible for the program. If, but if all of the roommates are on the same lease and have the same lease with this, and are responsible collectively for the rent, then we are asking all of them to apply together. We've had situations where that's not the case, where there's a house of roommates and they all have a different lease. And then they're each individually assessed. But the way that it's set up right now is if you live with roommates and you're all, all on the same lease, legally you are all responsible for that rent, whether or not one person doesn't pay their rent and the other three do. You all could be taken to housing court. So we're asking all of them to apply together.
So if you've got four people living together and three of them manage to work remote, but one of them loses their job, they could apply collectively. And even if their collective income exceeds area median income, you'd still consider that application provided the person who, who received the, like who had the hardship is under that or how's that going to work?
They would be considered a household. And so they would have to meet the, so if there were four of them living in a house together and they were all on the same lease, the way that the program is currently set up is that they would need to meet the four person income limit together.
But that seems like not a good idea because that four person income limit, isn't that assuming like a family with kids? It just seems like that, that's a whole different situation.
When, to, to address this, Counselor Peak, you, we would need to look at this Community Preservation Act legislation and the way that they, the state has allowed municipalities to provide assistance is based on the area median income. And those guidelines, those, the way that is determined is set by HUD. So that the federal housing urban development. So we can't really just, if, if there are four people living together all on the same lease, they're considered a four person household. And they have to meet those, they have to be underneath that four person income limit, even if they're not a family. But that is just the, the way that the CPA act and the guidance from the DOR, I mean, that we have to implement our program in, in that manner.
I'd be really interested to see if there's any lever we could pull there because that just seems like it's kicking a lot of people out of eligibility who are the actual population that you're targeting. I mean, nobody in, no, no poor person lives in East Hampton by themselves and pays market rent. That's just, there isn't, that's not a reality for people here. I mean, I know plenty of households, sorry, I'll, I'll, I know I've gone over my, I know plenty of households that bring in well over a hundred thousand dollars and everyone there is poor and struggling to survive. Right? So they're past, I mean, I understand that we're like stuck with a lot of stupid laws that our stupid state and federal governments give us, but that's just stupid. Like, I'm not blaming you guys, but we got to figure something out. That's not going to work.
Thank you, Counselor Peak. Counselor Rist, I saw your hand and then Counselor Kuzinski.
Just want to say to the counselors, the pilot program is designed to look at all of the things everybody's bringing up. And I think once it's completed, we can find out participation and maybe with Jenna's help, we can try to overcome some of these issues. We could reissue the contract and figure out if we can fix them. But I ask you to be patient. I think they are doing the best they can. All of these issues are important, but unfortunately they are, they are restricted by law and by what we've set up initially, which was pretty much modeled on what they've done before in other communities. So let's, let's give them time. The pilot program ought to tell us how it's being used and whether or not we can make any fixes if we can.
I know I've seen a couple of hands hanging there, Counselor Rothschild. Counselor Kuzinski, then Counselor Flood, and then Counselor Rothschild.
I just wanted to thank the folks who've been working on this program. We set it up and wanted it to work fast and efficient and be investigative in the process to be sure that you vetted those individuals who made application. It sounds like you've processed twenty nine, you've had twenty nine appointments, that there are twenty two households that you've dealt with or are currently dealing with, with three being approved for a total of fifty eight hundred and three dollars, if I heard correctly. And running those numbers out, it would be an expense of around forty two thousand five hundred if all twenty two other households received the same amount, which would still fall well below the limit of what was asked for at the hundred thousand dollar level. We want to be sure that we're reaching out to the right people and that everyone who is eligible hears about the program. I think you've taken steps with the major landlords. I wish that there were some simple process with smaller landlords. I think it may eat up the figures of money that's available to go under a direct search program for individuals. I wonder how much effort is being put into the housing court process. I know you say you have links with those, those, the legal services attorneys. And I would think they would be the pinch point for most evictions. So you'd hear about it. It would be funneled through your office and I'm glad those contacts are there. Could anyone be slipping through the cracks in, in housing court? Is anyone, is it worth the effort to do a search of the housing court records for evictions in East Hampton to see if there are specific folks that we could reach out to? That's one kind of question and thought and process. Another is, I'm actually quite sensitive to what Counselor Peak is saying about roommates. Obviously, if someone's in the service industry or in a, a, a job that they're hand to mouth and all of a sudden there isn't restaurant jobs, there isn't this type of job, that we're sensitive to be sure no one gets evicted during that process. If we can help them. And I'd like to be sure we're doing everything. So I would definitely voice my concern about that. With regard, my, my, my thinking is though that I don't think landlords send typically individual eviction notices to one person of four if four people are paying rent unless they have leases or rental agreements with each and every one of the people. And I think you'd need that agreement violation by not paying the rent to be able to trigger us to be able to help people. So I, I didn't know if, I was just hoping that there would be some way to be sure we had everyone who was eligible found and if folks not be evicted during this process, if we can help them with the financing.
Uh, okay. Counselor Flood and then Counselor Rothschild.
So I have a number of thoughts that I'm just going to try to like narrow down here. But going back to this process, taking four or five weeks compared to a normal eight week process with RAFT, I really want to call attention to something that we're not even talking about. And that's pre pandemic. It's the number of years, the number of years that families sit on waiting lists for affordable housing. This is an issue that has been brought to our attention exacerbated by the pandemic. But this is an issue that has been an issue in East Hampton for years. And not only East Hampton, but surrounding communities. So exactly what you're saying, Tom, our hands are tied by stupid laws and a system that is very broken. And for these families and for these people who get assistance and even get to the point where they can start to save a little bit of money and build a cushion for themselves, what happens is they lose that assistance and then they start back at square one. So as we move beyond this emergency situation, I really have to stress how important it is for us to look at options such as Jamie mentioned, maybe CPA functioning in some sort of alternative rental assistance program for our community or for looking at other alternatives. And I have two very unpopular words that I think are well overdue for East Hampton. And that is rent control. And I know it's not a popular topic, but if you always do what you've always done and you let the market dictate what happens, we are going to continue to keep people in poverty, struggling, having to do whatever they can do to make ends meet and still having to deal with housing court and all of the trauma that that brings. So I'm glad we're having this conversation, but it absolutely cannot end with this emergency program. This has been going on for a very long time. And I'm really glad to hear some of my fellow counselors sort of like really keying into the ridiculous nuances of what it's like for people to live every single day for generations now. This is, this has been a long time people have been suffering. And I just really, I beg you to not forget this conversation as we move forward.
Thank you, Counselor Flood. Counselor Rothschild.
And I just want to recognize Jenna, I know all the work you do for the city on affordable housing. And so I thank you and I thank you for the work you're doing on this and you as well, Jamie. I just hope that we can document people that are rejected or declined and see if they're following into renters like Tom's talking about or people like I'm talking about that meet their obligations, but are driving up their credit cards and other things to make ends meet or borrowing from family members. Because when I had asked this question before, the mayor might be here listening, she said, oh no, if they can document they, their debt to a family member, that would count. But obviously it doesn't. And I know Counselor Rist asks us to be patient, but these are people in emergency situations. So sitting here saying be patient is like a privilege point for us because I don't think any of us are about to lose our homes. So I, I don't think we should be patient. I think we should find out if people are getting declined, who's really needed and see how quickly we can adjust the rules. We should be able to adjust it as we go. I don't know what laws might be in the way of that, but it seems like there's people in emergency situations that need help. And that's why, the reason we're doing it, we should be able to adjust going forward. So I'd just be interested to hear back if people are being declined, why?
Thank you, Counselor Rothschild. Jenna, do you have any comments to any of the questions or the statements that have been made before I call on another counsel? I mean, I, we will certainly track the reasons for denial. I mean, you know, this is your program. This is not my program. So the city wants to make changes to the program within the confines of what CPA allows. You know, Community Action is happy to do it. You know, and I would be happy to work with you on, you know, changes or, you know, especially on, I mean, that particular change, you know, Counsel Rothschild, I just, a lot of issues come up. And so we would really, I would just really be interested in, in help and really thinking through how we're going to make, to document some of that. Because it is, you know, I am, Community Action is beholden to the city to document how we're spending your money. And we have to back it up and I have to send it to Jamie. So we have to, you know, that's, it, you know, in real life and when we're actually doing it, it's, it's hard. It's complicated. And so, but again, this is your program. So you tell Community Action how you want us to do it. Thank you. Counselor Rist.
I just wanted to comment on Counselor Rothschild's statement. My patient, my comment on patience had to do with being patient with Jenna and her group. Yes, we can change things immediately if we want to. If we do that, the complication is the program would have to stop, I guess, and be reworked. I would just like to make sure that we can get as many people in this program that we have now, the help they can get. And I certainly would entertain any changes that we're allowed to do by law. But unfortunately, we are restricted by laws that, as Counselor Peak said, are wrong, but we have to live by them. And I just like her to be able to get, as one of our CPA members stated, if we can help a few people with this program, and it looks like we might help twenty two right now, if we can help a few people, that's a few people that wouldn't be helped if the program didn't exist. So that's all. So that's all I meant by that. I wanted her to feel, we certainly, I know you all support Jana and what she's doing, but we can look at the program, I mean, put together a list of things we want to maybe try to change, but we might have to do that through the legal way we can do it. That's all I'm going to say.
Councilor Peak?
Yeah, and just to be clear, this program was set up in emergency. It's set up as a pilot. We knew that there were things we were going to, you know, iterate on. I'm certainly not, I mean, it frustrates me that the state sets up silly things, but I'm certainly not, anyone here is doing anything other than their best. I just think what I'm really interested in from you, Jana, and from Jamie as well, is a sense, you know, like, we appropriated a pretty sizable chunk of money to help people out here, and if we think that there's people out there who could be helped by this and aren't, then we want to figure out what needs to change to help them. I think I can speak for the entire council when I say that. If that means that me, you know, writing a special petition to the state legislature saying, the way you set up this rule for this narrow circumstance working, please amend it, and maybe it takes them two years, but I'll send that out, you know? That's a privilege we have as a city council, we can do that. But I think that, like, you know, we, like, I just need, what I really want to get a sense of, and it sounds like you're collecting these data, and I just encourage you to continue doing that, is who is this not helping who does need help? And what can we do? What can we change to make sure that it does help them? If we ran out of the $300,000 right out the bat, or the $100,000, I suppose, then I might be looking at different, saying, wow, that, just this alone is, you know, there's clearly, this clearly addresses like a sizable population, but I'm worried there are people out there who this, who just, because of the guidelines, this isn't quite touching, and I want to figure out what we could explore. Maybe some of those we decide are not actually appropriate solutions, but I want to know what tools, what levers we could pull, what things we could change to reach a broader audience if, in fact, you know, the money's not flying out the door because we appropriated it to help people, you know? So, but I really do appreciate what you guys are doing, and I hope, I hope I didn't come off as overly cross at either of you. It really wasn't my intention. I just, sometimes I think the law, the rules are silly, but that doesn't mean that the people who are working are not doing their best.
Councilor Zeret?
Thank you, President Coniff. A lot of the questions I had have already been asked, but it occurred to me that if there's a four to six week lag in terms of being approved and you're already a month behind on rent, is that taken into consideration? In other words, you're a month behind when you apply, and then a couple months go by before you'll find out if you can even be, receive funding, now you're two to three months behind. Is that accommodated for in terms of the relief that you're granted? It just seems like you're already in the hole, and by the time you hear anything, you're in an even deeper hole. I just, I'm not, I'm kind of confused as to how one of these applicants is supposed to magically have climbed out of their financial insecurity when they get funds.
So it's definitely taken into consideration. We are, you know, for the most part, staff are working with these folks, you know, every other day for those four to six weeks, and we are in contact with the landlord both to show that they are, you know, behind, and then right up until the point where we're writing the check to the landlord to verify what the balances do. So the landlord assistance agreement that Jamie has a copy of asks, you know, what is the current rent, how much is due, and sometimes that will have changed from the last time we talked to the landlord. Or, you know, oftentimes, the applicant will say, I can't pay April's rent. And so we will say, okay, and we're doing a budget with them, so we can also see if they are going to need help with April's rent or with May's rent. And so this program allows for both rent arrears and for future rent up to the $3,000 cap. And so it gives us flexibility to provide the assistance that the person really needs. And if, you know, the three applicants that we, that have been approved so far haven't been in this situation, but there are people out there that owe significant amounts of money, you know, $10,000, $12,000, $15,000 in rent they have not paid in a year. And so for those folks, you know, we are then also working with Raft because, you know, East Hampton can't resolve that problem. And so, you know, over the last year, we have developed a much stronger relationship with Wayfinders than we previously had, and we are able to, you know, they're able to call us and say, okay, we're going to pay $9,000, can you pay $2,000? And again, Community Action has other resources, and so maybe we're going to use some other funding source also to help stabilize that household. So yes, we do know right up until the end if the person's rent arrears have changed and, you know, really, you know, spend a lot of time talking to the landlord and the applicant about that. So, yeah.
Councilor Gomez?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to try to be quick. First, thank you, Jana. I think you guys are doing a great job. I have to say thank you to Councilor Peak and Councilor Flood, but then your statement both are on point. We have to address our people and the poor community here in East Hampton and make it something more affordable to everybody. Definitely, we have to do that. Well, my question is, after you guys are working with this household that is struggling with one month of rent, and probably, possibly, the household, the person who was working is not working anymore. So after we help them to pay the rent that is their own, do you guys send them to another program to stay in their apartment, or after we help them, they have to get out because they don't have any job, and now they have, they're going to lose their apartment?
So, yes, so I guess I'll say that Raft has an enormous amount of money right now, and is probably going to get even more money. And it is really easy right now to get approved for Raft, which did not always used to be the case. And Raft will pay future rent. And so what we've seen happen, particularly for people that we would consider maybe unsustainable, you know, they really can't afford their rent or they've lost their job, that then we would be helping them apply to Raft because if they have a COVID reason, Raft will also pay, again, up to $10,000, and they will pay monthly rent. And so, yes, we would be working with them to help them stabilize. And then also, Community Action has other programs. We have a, we have some job skills programs, we have an alternative staffing program called Harmon Personnel that helps people find jobs. So we would also be trying to make connections for those folks. You know, it's hard. I mean, for some folks, it's really hard to find a job, and it's, I mean, I'm not at all suggesting that we are successful every time in helping people make those connections, but that is part of what the staff does, is really look at the whole person to figure out, you know, we're going to help with the rent, but what are all the things that you might need help with? They do a strengths and action plan with applicants to try to get a sense of what their goals are, to try to make better referrals. So we are doing those things. You know, it's, it's, doesn't always, it's, sometimes those people call back again in four months and still need help, and, you know, we'll try to help them again, and it, you know, it doesn't always work perfectly, but that's the goal anyway.
Any other questions for many councils? Councilor Rist?
I just want to make a statement if everybody else is done asking questions as the chairman of the CPA. You all need to know the reason that Jana and Jamie are here tonight is because there's certain people in town that don't think it's appropriate for us to be helping with rent relief with the CPA. And the planning department has entertained a lot of phone calls, which is why they're here. And every one of you, even though you have questions and ways in which you want to improve this program, you all know that it's a valuable program, and you would fund it again, and you've even suggested that maybe the CPA could fund a future program for rent relief after the pandemic is over. We certainly can do that. But here's my statement to those people that think that we shouldn't be doing it. To those who feel that the rent relief program is not appropriate use of CPA funds, I dare say you are so very mistaken. The Community Preservation Act was probably the most, single most important act of community that this state has enacted. It is designed to improve the quality of life and to preserve the rich history of every community in Massachusetts which has accepted it. It also was enacted to give citizens the ability to live the American dream in an affordable home. I have always championed the CPA because it has improved East Hampton's quality of life, and I dare say those that oppose rent relief just don't get it. Would having homeless citizens camping in Pulaski Park be a good image for East Hampton? Or maybe we should put veterans who sacrificed for us out on the street because this pandemic has left them unable to pay the rent? East Hampton is the village I am glad I live in and serve as a counselor because the vast majority, the vast majority of our residents definitely aren't selfish and will help in any way they can. They are all good neighbors, and the vast majority of them support this program. I'm saying that to those who oppose this program. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Rist. Anything else for Jana or Jamie?
You guys went off tonight. Usually, you're so much happier to see me.
Well, we love to see you. Are you kidding? This is wonderful. No, we, it's just, you know, we have questions. Thank you so much for coming. Thank you, Jamie, for helping us navigate this. You guys are doing an amazing job. We'd like to have more conversations with you around just what we've talked about and any, anything we can navigate around to make this easier, faster. But thank you so much for stepping up and managing this. We really appreciate it. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilor Kuzinski, did I see your hand before they go?
I was just seconding your statement. I really appreciate the program for stepping up to taking on the challenge. I understand we had difficulty finding a contractor to help with the program. So I'm glad we have a service provider, and you're here, and you're doing the job.
Thank you, guys.
All right.
Thank you. Take care.
Right.
Stay safe.
Thank you.
We can continue on with communication from elected officials, boards, and committees if anyone would like to make any comments about something else on their mind. Well, we know Councilor Zeret does. I was just seeing if anybody else does. Councilor Zeret, go ahead.
Thank you, President Coniff. Just a couple things. I'm sure you're all aware, and if you're not, there was a mass shooting in Atlanta earlier today where eight people were killed by a gunman. Six of them were Asian-American, and it speculated that the gunman was specifically targeting Asian-Americans. As the mayor of Atlanta said, this is an attack on all Americans. These are not the value of our country or the value of the city of Atlanta. This is a comma on what has become a rash of acts of violence against Asian-Americans throughout the pandemic that I think have been stirred by certainly our former president, but others who have co-opted potential country of origin of the COVID-19 virus and use that to weaponize it into acts of racism. And then combined with that, this, just another act of gun, senseless gun violence that are, that is an ongoing pandemic in our country in and of itself. So I just wanted to mention that and reflect on those lives lost today. And then apropos of that, too, I just wanted to say that I believe we are pretty close to our one-year anniversary of holding our remote meetings via Zoom for the city council. I want to commend everyone for basically not skipping a beat, continuing to do amazing work, particularly thanks to you, President Coniff, who I feel you've served five terms in the course of one with all the extra work you've done, and certainly to all my fellow counselors who worked through the summer where we normally have a legislative break, and all of the work that we've done during this term that is in significant excess of what we normally do. And to that point, too, we've had to work under unusual circumstances, both professionally, legislatively, as well as personally. We've had to give up a lot of things that we enjoy doing, either because we were forced to or because we chose to. And I think that for, from what I've seen, the members of the council have chosen to be leaders in the community in terms of setting, setting the example by wearing masks, by talking about all the precautions we've had to take. They've made personal sacrifices and chosen not to do some things that maybe weren't directly mandated against, but they chose not to because they probably weren't completely advisable in terms of some of the restrictions posed to us. And we've neglected certain creature comforts, not seeing friends or family because unless we had to or we hadn't seen them for a long time, or they were sick. And so I just want to commend you all. Quickly, yesterday, I had the opportunity to visit the Children's Advocacy Center of Hampshire County. I went over there with Chief Norris, just, I was trying to just connect with him, and he happened to be visiting there. If you don't know, this is a fantastic resource in Hampshire County, the CAC, the Center for Advocacy, Children Advocacy Center. It's a, it's, they deal with victims of child abuse, both physically and sexually. It's a multidisciplinary setting, working with a variety of both medical caregivers and social workers and law enforcement, and I encourage you all to check it out. Cara, and I might massacre her last name, Mackelhany, who's an East Hampton resident is the director, I encourage you to reach out to her. And finally, the holiday Passover is coming up. I advertised this on social media, but for all of our residents out there, both who are Jewish and Jew-ish, as the Federation had said, people who are interested in learning more about the Jewish religion, PJ Library and the Jewish Federation are working in cooperation with the Harold Greenspoon Foundation have put together a Passover PACs, which, if you're interested, just email me. These basically provide family activities and some important items for the holiday observation, and the deadline's pretty soon in order to get those out there for the holiday. So if you want to email me at ozarrett@easthamptonma.gov, I can help point you in the right direction, and that's all.
Thank you, Councilor Zeret. Anyone else? We do have more time in our meeting, I believe, so I see you, Councilor Flood. Councilor Flood, go ahead.
Very briefly, I will just ask everyone to help us folks at East Hampton Media spread the word that we are looking for new members to join our board of directors. And just very briefly, if you're interested, please send a letter of interest, an email to president@easthamptonmedia.org.
Thank you. All right. Anything else? Okay. Moving on to correspondence announcements, President, Vice President, Communications. Councilor Rist, do you have anything? No? The only thing I'm going to say, I don't have the solution yet, but there has been, and perhaps the mayor will speak to it when her agenda item comes up, there has been some talk between the mayor and myself regarding the Blue Bagged Reminder newspaper. If you all recall, the publisher came before us a year ago and asked if he could build a process, build an audience for his newspaper. I personally love the newspaper. We don't get this much coverage anywhere else, and there, there are interesting articles about what goes on in the city that we don't see anywhere else. But part of the agreement with the publisher was that they would, if they saw a house that didn't, that hadn't picked it up, that they would pick it up on the next go-round. Certainly, the weather has created some problems, but it's not happening, and it's becoming quite an eyesore. It's an eyesore on my street, and it's an eyesore pretty much all around the city. I do know that the publisher has, and I don't, I'm not going to take the mayor's thunder, but I know that they are working to pick these up, that, that he has put the call out to his staff to go around the city and pick them up, and that's fine. But I, I think a new process at this point we may want to consider, although the only, the only action by the city council is to allow it or invoke the, actually, we don't even invoke the fines, but there are fines, we do have an ordinance, and it's, it's now kind of, it's a problem in that we kind of, it's a problem in that we may need to exercise some of the levers that we have to make this problem go away. And either it is to only deliver to homes that have actively requested it, or a, a huge cleanup has to go on and then we, we can't see this going forward. We can't have this conversation going forward. So conversations are going on, emails are going on. I believe I may be talking to the publisher tomorrow, but there are conversations and I want the public to know that their concerns are, are my concerns and we're, we're looking at trying to get those, that picked up. Councilor Rothschild and then Councilor Derby.
Thank you for addressing this. We actually just reviewed this ordinance in the Ordinance Review Committee. And I've been hearing the same concerns on my street. In fact, in front of my own house, I had three piled up right on my walk. So, I mean, we do have that ordinance available to us to find, and I think we should use it if, it's my thought.
Uh, Councilor Derby.
So when you do talk to the publisher tomorrow, can you just throw out one thought, which is bring back the paper person? You know, I used to be called the paper boy when I was little and we had like a sack and we'd walk around neighborhoods, good exercise, what a great first job for like a young teenager. And I can't imagine that would cost that much more than, you know, paying people to drive really slowly, creating traffic problems and, and spreading these like gross plastic bags everywhere. So throw that out there.
I will throw it. I also think, you know, maybe there's a conversation to be had, and I don't know if they, if they are already doing it, but if there's a conversation to be had around newspaper boxes and strategically locating them throughout the community so that if you want it, you will go to the box and get it as opposed to having it thrown all over the city. So a lot of conversations to be had and, and we'll have to see where it goes, but just wanted to alert you that the conversations are going on. Okay. I think that's all for all of us. Mayor, did you have anything for Mayor Communications?
Yeah, just to, around the, the blue bags, I, I talked to the publisher shortly before this meeting and he, you know, wants to do everything he can to correct it. I did remind him, though, that the ordinance, you know, this is a, you know, a verbal agreement, a pause between the city and the Reminder Publications to allow this to happen, to see if it can be managed. I know that there are some concerns by residents that it, you know, they, they don't feel they should have to opt out for, you know, starting, you know, to, to not get it at the house. And, you know, he, the publisher will, says he's going to call President Coniff on the issue. The paper is great, but the, you know, the blue bags, I picked up six on my part of East Street that, you know, were pushed there by Snowplow or whatnot, but it, what I told the public, it doesn't really matter how they got there, what time of year it is. You know, we, we just don't want, that's, that's why the ordinance was passed. So, and also that there was perhaps a possibility of a fine going to his company. So he is looking forward to the conversation with you tomorrow, President Coniff.
Okay.
And absent questions from the council, I have nothing else to present.
Does anyone have any questions of the mayor? Okay, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We will now move into the reports of committees. Councilor Rist, Finance.
Thank you, Madam President. We will be meeting next week, March 24th at 5:00 PM, and we will be dealing with two new items of business, which I'm about to read into the record. The first item, these are both first readings, is a supplemental appropriation. The request is made for approval for $10,000 to be transferred from free cash, to be transferred to the electric bike revenue account, $5,000, and the electric vehicle revenue account, $5,000, for the following purpose. Electric vehicle and bicycle charging stations have been installed at various locations around the city. Earlier in FY '21, an enterprise fund was established to handle the finances associated with the operation of these stations, and the Department of Public Works has been tasked with managing this fund. In time, the electric vehicle charging stations should generate sufficient revenue to cover the charges associated, associated with operating all these stations. However, the stations have not yet generated enough revenue to cover their, cover their expenses for fiscal year '21. We are requesting $10,000 to be appropriated from free cash to cover these utility expenses for the remainder of this fiscal year. The next appropriation, which has been presented, is a supplemental appropriation. The amount requested is $60,000 to be transferred from enterprise retained earnings, $60,000, to be transferred to the Cherry Street Design Account, $30,000 for sewer and for water. The Cherry Street Design Account is also $30,000. For the following purpose, in coordination with the Planning Department, the Department of Public Works is working to obtain Community Development Block grant funding to replace aging water and sewer utilities on Cherry Street. In order to be eligible for consideration of CDBG funding, we need to have shovel-ready plans and bid documents for this work. Madam President, I move in a single motion to send these to the Finance Committee and also to set a public hearing for both of these items at our next city council meeting.
Second. Motion and a second to move these two supplemental appropriations to the Finance Committee. Is your motion also to set the public hearing simultaneously for April 7th, which is the next city council meeting?
That's correct.
Any further discussion? Barbara?
Lindsey Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Madam President, I believe that concludes.
Thank you, Councilor Rist. There is no report for public safety. Moving on to appointments, Councilor Rothschild.
Hi. Councilor Flood and I met on March, on the 11th, and we continued talking about the appointment process and we, I think we will have a draft rule. I'll type it up for our next meeting, so it'll be in the agenda of our next meeting to discuss. So our next meeting, well, so we have two appointments to move over. So I'm going to make a motion to move the following mayoral appointments to the Appointment Committee. Amy Teffer to the Conservation Committee with a term expiration 12/31/2023. Stan Diamond to the Council on Aging with a term expiration 12/31/2022. And the reappointment of Emily Russo as Personnel, Personnel Director with a term expiration
Second. Motion is second to move three mayoral appointments to the Appointment Committee. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
We've lost Ann. Okay. Okay. Then Lindsey Rothschild.
Hi.
Okay. Motion passes eight to zero.
I also, I also wanted to add, so we talked about, we want to, you know, start educating the public more about what the different committees and boards do, and Councilor Flood had a great idea, I thought. We're going to keep inviting different committee chairs to our meeting, and since those meetings for now are recorded on video, we'll be able to take clips of that video and edit it into little snippets to share with the public. That was Councilor Flood's idea, which I thought was a great one, and also keeps us informed about the different committees. So we're going to prioritize it with the committees that need people first, so I'll check in with the mayor's office and see which ones are kind of the ones we want to, you know, highlight the most. Our next meeting is April 1st at 3:30. And thus concludes.
Thank you. Ordinance, Councilor Derby.
Thank you, Madam President. So Ordinance Committee met on the 9th, and we continued our discussion on accessory dwelling units, and that discussion is, is fruitful, I would say, and is educating all of us in the, in the committee, and we're getting some good input from the public and fellow counselors. So, so we're, we're continuing to move forward. Our next meeting will be March 23rd at 6:00 PM, and I, and I don't think I've requested that yet, so I'll be sending an email shortly, President Coniff. And I also wanted to address the fact that we are working on cannabis delivery, and I, I think it would be as, as a, a good measure to request that we have the Solicitor's review of that ordinance at this point. We've worked through a lot of the, the, the pieces of it. We're still yet to have our joint public hearing with the Planning Board, but I think this is a prudent time to ask for that to happen. And I know Councilor Zaret has the, the most recent copy that I'm sure he'd be happy to send to you, President Coniff, if, if you so agree to that.
Yes, let's do that.
Okay. And I also want to just, let me, hold on, let me just get my calendar up really quickly because we do have that joint public hearing with the Planning Board, which is the 13th at 6:15.
I assume you mean April 13th.
April 13th, I apologize. And, and I could ask for time for some of our things, but I feel like we will have another meeting, so in the, for the sake of brevity, I will conclude.
In fact, one of yours does expire before we meet next. Your cannabis delivery expires on 4/6 and our next meeting is 4/7.
I thought I snuck it in.
Seconds from a clean getaway.
Oh, okay. In the form of motion, I would like to request 60 days on that one, please.
Second.
Motion second to add 60 days to the cannabis delivery. Any discussion? Barbara?
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, I think it's safe to conclude now.
Thank you, Councilor Derby. I assume there's no report for property, Councilor Zaret?
There, there is not. There is not. Just, I just realized something, though. I didn't know if this would go under finance, but there's a new business for the skate park.
Yeah, I was going to get to that when we get all the way to the end.
Okay, just, just, yeah, okay. There, I think there's a report.
Okay. Councilor Peak, Rules and Government Relations.
Thank you, Madam President. So we met two weeks ago and had a pretty good conversation about both Councilor Flood's remote participation adoption proposal and the, the Council Rule 5C. I will start by saying that the, when it came to the remote participation adoption proposal, we, we all thought it was a, a great idea. And we, we actually were able to meet the next week to get a quick tour of the city council chambers and see some of the upgrades that have gone in, that Jen and her team at East Hampton Media have put in. So I'm really excited to be able to be back there with all of you and to, to see some of this, but to get the ball rolling on this, it turns out that under the general law, it is, it's the, it's the, the mayor is the, the person that does the next step. So I wanted to make a motion at this time to recommend to the mayor that she move forward with adopting the relevant MGL to allow for remote participation in the future.
Second. Motion is second for the, to recommend to the mayor that she accept the MGL that allows for remote meetings of all committees once the pandemic is over. Any further discussion? Councilor Rist?
I wanted to thank Councilor Flood for bringing it to us, and after looking at the possible situations with remote access, the touchscreen TV that East Hampton Media has put in, it's going to be a wonderful way of getting more participation from residents who are unable to physically attend our meetings in the future. Excellent idea. Thank you, Erica.
And I'm just going to add that for the record, the MGO, Barb, you can tell me if this is wrong, MGR is 940 CMR 29 dot 10. 940 CMR? 29 dot 10. And I think that's actually the open meeting law. Okay, can you send that to me because I, I want to make sure that it's the right? Yes. Because the mass general law that was brought forward was only for certain committees, not everybody. So I just want to make sure I have the right. Yep. Okay. If you could send that to me, that would be great. Absolutely. Okay. So our, the motion on the floor is to recommend to the mayor to allow committees to meet remotely after the pandemic is over. And Barbara? Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Motion passes. So in the, so Barb, do you think, do we need to put a letter together that goes to the mayor? Or is this vote the record of recommending that the mayor do this? How do we get a feedback loop from the mayor is what I'm saying? Well, I mean, I'll just make the motion just like what you had it, but I just want to know the specific mass general law or CMR you're referring to because I, I think it's really only, well, I, I want to make sure that what I'm sending is what you really want. Yep. And then once she signs it, that's her acceptance of it. Correct. Well, we'll have to, whatever the mass general law says. Right. Okay. Thank you, Barb. Yeah, Councilor Flood?
The CMR is in the previous packet, so it was submitted with my original proposal as a reference point, Barb, so just if you look back to that last.
I think it was February 17th meeting. Okay, I mean, I, I have it. I just didn't, I just didn't under, from my understanding of this mass general law, it's for members of committees to be able to participate remotely if they're not able to be present, not to have like public input. It's for members of boards.
Well, actually.
Hang on, guys. Please raise your hands, but let me respond to Barb first. The, the, the public meeting law does not speak to whether people can participate, so in doing our research, it is not disallowed. So, and it, that's, there's a ruling by the open meeting law people that that's not their intent, but they're also not going to tell you not to do it. So what we're looking at is a way to do it in a hybrid fashion, and certainly we're not going to do it if it doesn't make sense, but we want the mayor to give us that authority to move forward in some sort of a hybrid kind of motion. And I can get you what I found, Barb, on, on what the open meeting law has said on this topic. Yeah, as long as, you know, I just need to know what the mayor, I mean, the chief operator, you know, a selected official must have to declare it or authorize it. Okay. Understood. Okay. Councilor Peak, did you have?
Sure. There was a little mix-up last week where we had an agenda and a Zoom meeting with different times on them, so we kind of missed each other. So just, since there wasn't a meeting held at the time that was on the agenda, I want to basically do a redo of that meeting and also touch on one or two other things. So I was going to suggest that we meet on this coming Monday, the 22nd, at 6:00 PM. And so that's one thing. And then just because we won't meet again until the 7th, I would like to make a motion to request a 30-day extension for the request for an amendment to City Council Rule 5C.
Motion second to extend by 30 days the City Council Rule 5C discussion on the agenda. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Hey, motion passes.
And thus concludes.
Thank you, Councilor Peak. Thank you, Counsel Peak. We have a number of ad hoc committees that are in flight. Counsel Peak, anything new to report on ranked choice voting?
We're meeting on the 31st to do their first ever test run, and I'm very, very excited about it.
Great. Counsel Kozinski, Senior Tax Workoff Committee.
The update from the Senior Tax Workoff Committee is that the city departments are being contacted to develop some positions, so while that process is underway, there are various groups working to bring together the actual mechanisms that this will all come apart, come together, rather, and I think we're looking to having this begin initially by July 1st, with the public, by sometime between July 1st and the end of August, being able to go forward with applying for positions and then hopefully get the ball rolling in September. So it's very exciting, and everyone's ready to move forward. So there are no formal meetings scheduled, but the work begins.
Thank you, Counsel Kozinski. Counsel Rothschild, you have two committees, ordinance review and also auditor selection committee.
Yep. Auditor selection committee, our first meeting is this Thursday at 5:30. And ordinance review committee, we've gone up through chapter seven, and we just want to say how appreciative we are of when department heads give us input. Again, Bree, Barb showed up at a meeting and gave us a lot of input, and Emily Russo showed up at a meeting. We are preparing our presentation for the council on April 7th, very excited, and April 5th at 6 o'clock is our next meeting, and thus concludes.
We have one piece of new business, Counsel Wrist. There was an item, there was an item. Can I speak for one second?
Sorry, you asked.
There was a request to establish East Hampton Public Skate Park Donation Account. Do you agree that goes to finance?
Actually, no. We normally approve donation accounts at one sitting because it's a donation.
Should we, so do we need to do anything?
Well, we have to approve the donation account this evening unless a counselor objects.
Okay.
If a counselor doesn't object, I will, I will read the donation if that's the pleasure of the president.
Please, thank you.
I have to find it on the package, just a second.
Have it handy if you want me to go ahead.
Why don't you read it? That'll make things go faster, make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, approval is hereby given to establishment account for the purpose of receiving funds designated for the maintenance and upkeep of the East Hampton Public Skate Park. Any second?
Second.
Motion is second to establish an East Hampton Public Skate Park Donation Account. Any discussion? Barbara?
Peg Coniff.
Yes.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Erica Flood.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Wrist.
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Wonderful. Motion passes. I think that we have conducted all the old business and all the new business, and I will take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion second to adjourn. Barbara?
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Erica Flood.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Wrist.
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Thank you, guys. Have a wonderful evening.
Good night, everybody.